Carrying out of emergency functions. Heather motions, can I have a second? Gianna, and this requires a roll call vote.
Tom Nukirk.
Tom Nukirk, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Gianna Jolsey, yes.
All right, we are in non-public.
Please repeat the motion.
The motion is to go into non-public under RSA 91-A:3 Roman numeral 2-F, consideration of matters relating to the preparation in carrying out of emergency functions.
Alexandra, let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead.
All right, we are back in public session. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Gianna, a second? Brian, okay. I should say that we will reverse the order of the non-publics at the end so that we will do the administrator discussion first and the superintendent evaluation after that. So with that amendment, all in favor? And we have seven in favor. The student rep is in favor. Any public comments tonight? I do not see any members of the public. Approval of the minutes. So we need a motion to approve December 20th regular meeting minutes. Gianna, and a second. Matt, any corrections? Yes, Tom?
I'll never learn that. A discussion was held among board members, amongst board members as to the grade levels the survey should address and have access to with the consensus being fifth through ninth grade. And I thought, the initial consensus I thought was sixth through ninth grade, and then we changed it with Gianna's motion to be sixth through 10th grade. Am I correct on that? Okay, so this should be probably sixth through ninth grade, and then with Gianna's motion it becomes sixth through 10th grade. Okay.
Other corrections? Heather?
I sent these to Karen already. On page one, the text of the motion should read Heather Smith made a motion to approve the hiring of Dr. Robert Chaps as superintendent for tenure three years at an annual salary of $210,000 in accordance with the negotiated contract to further authorize the chair, or and to further authorize the chair Denise Day to sign the contract on the board's behalf. So there was just clarification on that, and I only would have caught it had I not had it memorized. And then there's a bit of weirdness on page two because we had so many minutes to approve. So I motioned to approve the 30th, the first, and the fourth, which were the interview days, the public and non-public meeting minutes. Matt seconded it, and then we all voted because those were like one-line minute kind of deals, and so there were no corrections or discussion, it just passed. And then Matt started with the corrections to the 12-6 public meeting minutes because we didn't have the non-public and sealing the non-public portion in those minutes because that was all done on that day. And then Gianna had some comments as well. And then Denise said, oh yeah, we haven't actually motioned to approve these minutes yet. And so then we did that, and then we'd already done all the corrections, and so we voted it. And so that text just needs to be reworked a little bit with where the motion passes needs to be pushed up, and then discussion about the 12-6 minutes, and then the motion, and then the vote. So it's a little wonky, but it's because we had so many, we were doing all at the same time. And then the last one for me is on page, can we just for a second before we leave that one? Because I also noted that, but I think just by clarifying that Matt Bacon made the following additions to the December 6 regular meeting minutes, because that's what he was making the additions to. So that's what I have as a, you know, as a correction there. And then, I, I'm not following, I think the rest of it is correct. Is there a specific spot that you think the wording should be revised after that, once we've added the clarification that Matt was making the following additions to the December 6 regular meeting minutes? So if you look, so has the, Heather made the motion in bold, and then there's the Matt made the following additions to 12-6, and the motion passed with correction 7-0. That needs to go before the Matt Bacon made the following, and it needs to say motion passed 7-0 because there were no corrections. We did the 30th, the first, and the fourth, all as one chunk, public and non-public all at once. And so then Matt Bacon made the following additions to 12-6, meeting ended, roll call vote, adjourn the meeting 8:01. And then, if you follow the video, Gianna then made revisions, and then Denise, because I actually did go back to the video and check this one, and Denise, you're like, oh, we haven't actually motioned to approve these minutes yet. And then we actually did the motion. And then it passed with the corrections. So it went a little out of order how it went. So the big ones are Matt Bacon made the following additions to 12-6, and then that motion passed needs to move up before that, and then you can sort of just keep the rest, and it's fundamentally the same thing.
Karen, you were able to follow that? Okay.
Then your next one, Heather?
I emailed her all the crazy so she would know. On page three, on the first paragraph, we were talking about sustainability. It should say Julie, no comma, Kelly, member of the Sustainability Committee, I think it says chair of the Sustainability Committee. And I'd like to add one sentence at the end of that paragraph. Parents and community members who may be interested in joining the District Sustainability Committee can email Suzanne.
Does she have that correction as well, Heather? Thank you. Really is very helpful when you're making those changes, as you have done to give Karen those changes, because it's sort of hard to follow verbally. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, Gianna?
I've got a couple of changes, too, and I already sent them to Karen, so she knows. Page three of five, and the superintendent report to add Dan Klein to list of school board members that Dr. Morse thanked for the Compse survey. Heather already caught the Julie and Kelly one, so that's good. Page four of five, this was the edits from the starting of the sentence, where it's me, it says Gianna Jelsey, and I just clarified that a bit because I know that she can't. Hear me when she's right behind me, it was about what came from the legislative, the NHSBA preview versus the Board of Education meeting. So I just rewrote a paragraph to say, Gianna Jelsey stated that she attended the NHSBA Legislative Preview Workshop where 300-plus proposals are being tracked. She also noted that a proposed rule change by the New Hampshire Board of Education for the Learning Everywhere Program would replace the review period of a particular program from one year to three years, and would also remove the mandatory criminal background check. She said that she wrote a letter to the BOE in opposition to these changes. It was just the fact that I think I couldn't tell that one was NHSBA and the other thing was the Board of Education, which is separate. But she has all those changes.
Any others? Okay, with those corrections, all in favor. Seven in favor, the student rep is in favor. Next, announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
David Goldsmith, Mohairamit, nice to see you all. I wasn't able to be at the December meeting, so I have some information for you about great things that happened in the month of December from Mohairamit. We had a concert happening, actually, the night of your school board meeting, and our music teacher Beth Struthers and the fourth graders did just an incredible job. It was here, in this beautiful space, and they sang their hearts out, they danced like crazy. It was a beautiful winter concert, so congratulations to all of them. It was really wonderful. Ms. Struthers is now preparing for a third-grade concert, which is going to be in February, and she started working already with the fourth graders on their musical for the spring, which is Finding Nemo Jr., which should be a hoot. That's going to be in April. We then had a pretty awesome assembly the last week of school before break. It involved our fourth-grade chorus singers performing at our school, along with the middle school festival band, jazz band, and members of their chorus coming. They came to us, and then they went to Masway and performed in both places. And that was a really great, great event for all of us, for all of us to see returning students come back to our school, for them to be at our school, and for our students, of course, to see what the future holds for them as they continue through our district with music was really great. Coming into January, we're continuing with our theme, the Year of Water. We're going to be doing some more assemblies around that topic. We are getting ready. We've been honored again to receive the designation of being a NAEP school, so our fourth graders will take part in the national assessment for that. And otherwise, we continue to do amazing teaching and learning every day. Questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Smith? Dr. Smith?
Can you elaborate what a NAEP school is? I don't know what that means.
Yes, NAEP is the, you maybe have heard of the Nation's Report Card? That's been an assessment that this country has done across the United States for a very long time, I think at least 50 years. And they choose schools throughout the nation to have students in various grades, for our building, it's only fourth grade, take part, and they choose a selection of students. It's random, but they do it across demographics. Parents, of course, have the option to opt out of that, but they ask for schools to participate, and then those results help build the picture of education in the country.
The national, national assessment of educational progress?
See, notice how I skipped right over the acronym because I had no idea. So Mohairamit has been chosen to be a NAEP school for most of my time at Mohairamit and before me as well. It is, you know, and it's an additional day, NAEP people come, trained people from NAEP come to do the assessment. My digital learning specialist and I work with them to prepare for that. They come, they do it in a space, it takes an hour or so, and then our students and their education gets to be a part of the data set that is the Nation's Report Card. So it's pretty cool. Thanks.
I can't tell if it's on. I guess it is. Pardon me? Okay, good. Good evening, Ms. DeLo, Masway School. Happy New Year. We're all very excited to be back. It's kind of like the beginning of the school year again, when the kids walk through on January 2nd, and Mrs. Lo, did you miss me? And I went here, and they just love being at school, which is exciting to see, so it's kind of like a fresh start. I did share at the December meeting, so I'm going to share dates moving forward. January 2nd, our PTO is sponsoring an opportunity for Masway students to go to a UNH hockey game against UConn, which is very exciting. So our students love to wear their Masway swag, go to UNH, and watch a fun hockey game, and all the proceeds go to our PTO to help with a variety of things for our students. On January 23rd, just a reminder, there is no school, and there will be voting happening at Masway School for the Town of Lee, so I wanted to be sure and make sure the community realizes that we will have school on the 22nd, but not the 23rd. February 8th, Masway is planning a family literacy night with a snow date of February 15th. So that will be a school-wide event that our literacy specialists and many classroom teachers are coming together to create an opportunity to talk about all things literacy with our families. And our library media specialists at Masway and Mohairamit have collaborated together to invite a visiting author to come to both schools. That's on February 16th. Matt Tavares, I hope I said that right, but both librarians have worked together, they're inviting a visiting author, the students will have an opportunity to purchase signed books and spend the day with our visiting authors, so that's really exciting. And then lastly, I wanted to share that our music teacher and our PE teacher are collaborating and co-teaching a fun music and movement unit with our second graders. It's called Ode to Joy. It's a tribute to the composers, and it's fun to see the Unified Arts teachers collaborate, bring their two programs and skills together, and co-teach and do fun things with kids. So we will be inviting all the second-grade families to come and watch a performance on February 20th. That's combined by Ms. Baker and Mr. Milner. So that's fun to look forward to. Any other questions for me? Yes, sir, hi.
What night was the hockey game?
I saw your eyes, Matt. I hope I have this right. I have it down for January 21st. It's a Sunday.
Twenty-five, I thought you said the second, which was yesterday.
No, sir, 21st. If I did say second, that was a mistake. It's a Sunday.
No, no.
And it is UConn versus UNH. Is it 20, 21st or 22nd? 21st, it's a Sunday. No problem. It's really, the kids and families love coming together, they get to go downstairs and meet the players, and sit by the ice, and it's just a fun. Yes, I could email you those dates and front-load that if that's helpful.
I've got, I've got.
Literacy night, yes. I was teasing, you're serious. February 8th is the Masway Family Literacy Night with a snow date of the 15th. Thank you, Matt.
Happy New Year. Bill Sullivan, Voice Driven Middle School. Like Misty said, great energy, the kids came back, it was awesome seeing the kids. Everybody's excited to be here. Staff's excited to be here, I think recharged and looking forward to getting going in the new year. So that's a great positive note. Some things coming up for us. We have a NELMS visit tomorrow, so New England League of Middle Schools has a school, actually a couple of middle schools in Andover, Mass. that want to do a visit and see us and see what great programs we're doing. So they're sending about six teachers or administrators, a small group, and we've got a day planned for them here to obviously show them the building, but see what programs we're doing, and help answer questions that they have to help them kind of formulate and, you know, put together a program that I would say, I don't know if it's like ours, but they have some questions that they want to find out what we're doing here. So that's going to be an exciting day. We have our school play coming up with our drama club. They've got five presentations, I think. They're showing one presentation to the school, our school, which will be great, all the kids will get to see them perform. That'll be on Friday, the 12th. They also have a 7:00 PM show that night for the public. On Saturday, January 13th, they've got a 1:00 PM show and a 7:00 PM show. And Sunday, the 14th, they've got a 1:00 PM And Sunday, the 14th, they've got a 1:00 PM show. That'll be their finale, and all the shows will be at the high school, at the auditorium. On January 25th, we have our fifth-grade concert, and that'll be for all our fifth-grade musical groups. We've got the Band Concert, Fifth Grade Chorus, and Fifth Grade Orchestra. So that'll be a great night. On January 26th, we're going to have our second seventh- and eighth-grade dance. Our first one was a huge success. It was a Halloween dance, and this one will be something with a winter theme, a winter ball or something like that. And like Moharamit, we too are a NAEP school, so we have our NAEP, our eighth graders will be taking the NAEP assessment on February 16th. Any questions? Denise?
What time does the fifth-grade concert start?
You know, that's a great question. I would normally say 7:00, but they've, all the winter ones were at 6:00, which was great. So I don't have the exact time, but I can get that to you tomorrow for sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, for sure. Yep. You bet. All right. Thank you.
Rebecca Noe from the high school. So a couple of updates. So the midterm schedule went out in the last newsletter, and that will also be published in this newsletter and the one after that also. January 15th, just a reminder for parents, there's no school that day. It's MLK Junior Day. January 23rd, there's no school, as that's now the teacher workshop day and voting. January 24th is the start of the new semester in quarter three, and then report cards will come out on February 2nd, which is a Friday. And February 8th is Eighth Grade Information Night in the high school auditorium at 6:00 PM, and that is already coming, so it just feels really fast. Our Program of Studies for Parents and Kids will be out by the end of January, so that's being worked on right now. Any questions for me? Any repeats? Eighth Grade Information Night, February 8th at 6:00 PM. You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
All right, that's it for district updates. Board updates. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, I'd just like to announce I've decided I'm not going to run for another term, so nine years feels about right to me. So obviously happy to talk to anyone who's interested in considering running for the board. I currently hold a Madbury seat, which is open to any residents of Madbury, and that's it. Thanks.
Other board comments, updates, with anything? I will say, right before the break, I did attend the last musical performance, which was incredible. One of the things, I've had a little bit of trouble figuring out times for the musical events, and that particular night was a makeup because of the weather, because of the day that, the stormy day with electricity and all of that, and I actually stumbled upon the correct time. It was purely by accident. I got here in time to see the full concert, but I would, I know that in the newsletters, the dates are always published, but not usually the time, so that might be something just to consider is to include the time that the various concerts start. We have beautiful facility, and I, one of the things I know for myself that I've hoped is that we could include more members of the community to come to these events because they are, our students are so talented, and our, our teachers are just amazing teachers and the music that they select, and I would really love to see, I mean, we always have a full house with all the parents and relatives, but I just would appreciate, you know, having that opportunity to maybe spread it out to the community so that they would feel like they could come and enjoy some of the wonderful music that we have here. Any other board updates? Okay. Next is Assistant Superintendent Report. All set? Okay. Superintendent Report?
Thank you, Denise. So I met with the administrative team this morning on our regular administrative team meeting, and we started talking about a whole host of issues. We were talking about, the one I wanted to share with the board is transition planning for the new superintendent. So we created a whole plethora of topics that we would want to share with the new superintendent. I did talk to him today, and we're going to meet next week and start talking about what he's interested in learning about and what, what we want to share with him over these next six months. So he was very pleased with the phone call. He seemed very enthusiastic about getting together, and so perhaps by the time we meet again on the 17th, I can, I'll be in a position to share the topics. I know he's going to reach out to you, Denise. One of the things he wants to do is have one-on-one time with board members, so, and he's going to get one-on-one time with administrators as well over these coming months. But there are many other topics that we think he could benefit by in creating a smooth transition for him. I am meeting tomorrow with the UNH Survey Center to finalize the survey work, clarify whatever questions they have, and hopefully we can get that out quickly. And on our Barrington meeting, they seemed, you know, ready to close on a new contract, but they decided they wanted to sync in with Dover, and I'm meeting with the superintendent on Friday to address the issues that came up in that meeting, so that that just be a folder that the new superintendent can pull out and be ready to, to make the minor changes that both sides discussed. There was nothing substantive in those conversations that would throw the contract out of whack or cause great discord on either side, just some minor stuff that we felt like was important to include on both sides, so.
Jim, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
I noticed on my calendar, on the 23rd of January, I have a joint meeting with the Barrington School Board for all of us. Is that?
Yeah, that's our normal annual meeting with them, just touch base, you know, make sure everything's going the way that both school boards want. I would guess that this year will be relatively positive based on the mini-meeting we just had with the chair and, and board member. So any questions on any one of those issues? Then that is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Business Administrator.
Happy New Year, everyone. So the only thing that's under my report is the discussion on the possibility of having warrant article number five. As we spoke in the past, Article 5 has not ever been on an Oyster River warrant article, which is the ability for the school district, should the warrant article be defeated for a collective bargaining agreement, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option for cost items only. So this is where the board was going to discuss whether or not they wanted to move that forward.
I would like to maybe hold off on the discussion until we get to discussion items, just so we can move ahead with the student rep report. If that's all right with everyone, so we'll see you in a couple minutes, and thank you. Student Rep, Maeve?
Definitely. All righty. I don't have any dates to announce, so you guys can all take a breath. We're all good. Just one announcement, though. Not to pat myself on the back, but girls' basketball team won the holiday tournament, beat Dover. Katelyn Klein, MVP. Yeah. So that's my only announcement. Also, if you have some scrapers for some snow, we're getting snow this weekend, so I'd bring those out.
And I bet everyone was excited to be back in school yesterday.
Maeve, you can tell the fellow students there's no school on Sunday through the snow.
It's like, it's like no snow, and then we finally have snow, and it's on a Sunday, of course. Anything else? Any questions for student rep? All right. Thanks, Maeve. Finance Committee, we don't have a meeting as of yet. We'll be discussing that. Oh, I think we can take Superintendent Search Committee off our agenda, so we can remove that next time. That was an oversight. We are done with that. Yay. Nothing under unanimous consent, so we are under discussion items, and the first item is the school calendar. Any further questions? Yes, Heather?
So this isn't going to derail anything with it since we've already sort of seen it, but one of the snow days is Juneteenth. Do we have an idea of what we might do? I mean, is the hope sort of we're done by that point, so we don't have to skip a Thursday, have a Friday, and then a Monday? Like, one of the built-in five snow days is Juneteenth, which ostensibly we wouldn't have school.
So the hope is that we don't have to use it, but if we do use it, it is a holiday, and we would have to follow that holiday.
So would that functionally then look like, was I looking at the wrong year? No, wait, hang on. This is this year's calendar. So.
Juneteenth is a.
Is a Thursday in 2025, right? Yeah.
This year's, this is confusing.
This year's in, this year's in the folder is the one that was updated with the new teacher workshop days.
Oh, so that's not the one that we're.
No, the one we're talking about is in the packet.
It's in the packet. Yeah. It got me first.
Let's be really confused. Yeah, so we're not, we're not talking about the updated calendar that was in our folder tonight. Thank you for that clarification.
So if we were to need all five, which hasn't happened in a while, but knocking on all the wood, we would have a holiday on the 19th, and then would we then have to do the makeup, makeup snow day on Wednesday, the 25th?
That's the way it's laid out, yeah.
Okay.
So should the calendar have, I guess, an X for the 19th instead of a snow day designation?
That's a good point.
And then move the snow day and the triangle to the Wednesday of that week?
Yeah, I think that, yes, I think we should reflect that because we would not have school on the 19th, so I think that the snow day should be reflected that way.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you for bringing that up, Heather, because that's the reason why I paused when we started talking about the school calendar, is that with Juneteenth being a recognized federal holiday, this is going to happen over and over again, which is why I thought possibly having a discussion with the other schools about bumping the school year up earlier, and then we don't ever have to worry about it.
Where you'd have to bump it up like four days earlier.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, it's not trivial, but it's something to consider because this is going to be a recurring issue with having a school.
So far, we've managed to avoid it.
Yeah.
But it is a real possibility.
With, with that adjustment, so we'll make, have that correction made with that correction, are we, can we have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar for second read and adoption? Gianna, is there a second? Heather, any further discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep is in favor. Okay. All right. The next item is our warrant articles. So yes, we will return to the discussion of whether we want to include an Article 5? No, not the Article 5. What is it? Yeah, a new Article 5, not the current Article 5, but whether, how folks feel about including a new Article 5.
In blue.
Yes, the one in blue. I, go ahead, Brian.
I mean, I know there was a discussion on it last meeting, and I'm concerned of why people wouldn't want it in there, considering, first of all, it's already in Article 3, which is our budget. The last line basically says the same exact thing. The second one is, this is the first year, this is a brand-new CBA. If it doesn't pass, then basically these same people will not have benefits, they won't have a pay scale for the next year. You will not have anything, you can't do anything with this until the next year. You had mentioned something about people using it as a way to get out of a, which, I don't know anyone who's ever even discussed that or mentioned that or even had that thought process, and I've used this in every district I've been in and other districts that I've seen as well. So this is pretty standard on most, just because the district hasn't used it before doesn't mean it's wrong, it just means it hasn't been. So it just boggles my mind that we wouldn't, we don't value our tutors enough to think that, hey, if it didn't work, we can always bring it back later. But remember, you have the option. If it doesn't, if you don't want to bring it back, you don't bring it back. It says right in there, you have one special meeting at its option. So if you don't want to, that's fine, but you, it's nice to have a little backstop in the event something does happen. I think it'll pass, but I can't tell the future. I don't have a crystal ball.
I see it a little differently in that this is the first year that we have, you know, the, this tutor's contract, and I just think that for voters that have never seen this, and they'd be like, hmm, why did they include that on this thing? There must be something, you know, concerning about it or what, because we haven't done it, and so it is a new, it is, it is a new thing for Oyster River. It may not be a new thing for other districts, but it's most definitely a new thing for Oyster River, and I, I just think, I don't like the message that it sends, so I'm not, personally, I'm not in favor of this. I think that we have done very well. It's true, there's always a first time, but I just, I just feel like it really sends a confusing message to the voters.
So I went round and, is it me? I went round and round on this one quite a bit because I love a good backup plan. I'm a big fan, but there were two parts that I got stuck on. One is what Jim mentioned, the, sort of the external pressure of the urgency to get things done if there are folks at the table who think they can get another bite at the apple later. That does remove some of that urgency, which I wasn't a big fan of. But the one that got me stuck the hardest was, right now, when we sit down in negotiations, we have both sides, the district and whichever bargaining unit we're working with, trying to come with their best offers to the table and have good, honest conversations, but there's always sort of the specter of the, what the voters will sort of tolerate or what they'll accept, and people have, sort of guessing what that is. And giving this option, our voters are savvy enough that, where they can't change the contract deliberative, and they can't, they can come in and say, well, we don't really love it, and we want you guys all to take another bite out of it, and this gives them the mechanism to say, you can do this next month. Yeah, it'll cost us a bit of money, but a well-organized group of folks can come in and say, yeah, we, we really don't love it, and instead of just passing it or not passing it, that being the option, we've given them option C, which is everybody goes back to the table and keeps biting at the apple until they get it right. And I love that option. And so while I do love a really good backup plan, I feel like it starts to skew the dynamics of the negotiations too much, and I'm not a big fan.
I think that was very well said, Heather. I appreciate the practical nature of it. I think it, it's, it's our job to present these articles in such a way that it's compelling to the public in the first place. I think the, especially given the transition that's coming with a new superintendent, several new members of the board, perhaps a new negotiating team, this would change precedent and would open the possibility of a strategic option that Jim described at the last meeting. So that's, and Heather, you essentially said that. So that, that's why, although I appreciate the, the benefit of doing this, I'm not going to support it.
So I guess I would like to make a motion that we accept the warrant articles as originally presented without the new Article 5. And yeah, I guess that's my motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrant articles as originally presented. Is there a second? Tom? Further discussion? All in favor? One, two? So I will call out so that Heather, I mean Karen can see. So Tom, Dan, myself, Matt, Heather. So Tom, Dan, myself, Matt, Heather and Gianna are in favor, as well as the student rep, all opposed. Brian is opposed. The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Is it, do you have any, is there any further? Okay. All right. All right. Yes, our next item is the public hearing discussion. Dr. Morse? Oh, excuse me, you're right, I skipped over a signing presentation of warrant articles. Yes. So I have made a list. So what I would like to propose is that Article Three, the operating budget, that would be Heather. Article Four, which is the tutors, would be Dan. Article Five, which is the facilities of, yeah, the facility development, maintenance and replacement, that would be Matt. Article Six, which deals with the artificial turf field, would be Tom. Article Seven, which is the athletic field revolving fund, I would do that. And the award, the presentation would be Gianna. And so that, we don't need a vote on that, so that'll just be the assignment for that. Yes, well, yeah, get it down, yep. Yes.
I just want to clarify, for Article Three, normally it's somebody on the finance committee and Brian has a prior commitment, which is why I got tapped.
Thanks for that clarification. Yes, Brian is unable to be with us that evening, so thank you for that.
Heather came highly recommended.
All right. Thank you. All right, now we are on the public hearing discussion.
It's a pretty brief discussion. Next Wednesday, the 10th, is our public hearing on the board. It's really my presentation as opposed to yours, switches to you, a deliberative session, and I just go over the budget for the community who attends and answer their questions. You all need to be there with me and to hear the questions and see if it influences, you know, direction that you want to go at all. So for the public, please come next week. Really an important meeting in the budget process. It is here and we hope that we get a good attendance at seven o'clock. Thank you Heather, seven o'clock. Any questions on that? All right, thank you.
Okay, next up is the facility fees. Yes, Amy. Thank you for your wonderfully detailed spreadsheet.
I know, I know. I think Heather and her kind of spreads on Excel sheets and big paper. So what we, what the board had asked us, what the board had asked us to do.
Pull that microphone right to you Amy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, the board asked us to go over all of the facilities used for, that's what I was trying to stop. Using Dover and Sauhegan and Portsmouth, so we went onto the internet and we pulled off all of the school districts' policy for how they do facilities use. They had different titles, different categories, and so in order to make it a little bit simpler for us to follow, we went with profit organizations, nonprofit and, and district organizations, because that's the category that we use most often here. So there are three sheets. One sheet is done by school, so if you're curious as to what Oyster River does or Portsmouth does, you'll be able to find them all, just exactly by the school. That one's two pages long. And then the second one is if you want to know specifically by a facility. So if you want to know what somebody is charging for their auditorium or for their gym, you can find those sectioned out as well. And then the last page, because the biggest conversation we've been having lately is the use of our turf field, the last page is just how the other districts do fees for their turf field. So I know it's a lot of information and I apologize that it wasn't in your board packet, but the packet was sent out before I had all this information altogether in the Christmas break, so.
Oh, yes Brian.
Were we, do we have one for tennis courts?
For what, sorry?
Tennis courts, our new tennis courts. Do we have a rental fee?
I don't believe we even have one on our policy for tennis courts.
I know they're new and I know the old ones we didn't rent out because they were terrible. I mean, they were dangerous actually.
Oh yes, they are, they are on here. We charge $150 an hour for outside for-profits, 75 for outside nonprofits and nothing for nonprofit in district. But that wasn't something that was put on the sheet, but I can add tennis court. We were trying to find items that are in most of the districts, some don't have other items and, but I have everything, I can send it to the finance committee if you'd like to see all of the other backup for the other districts.
Yes, also, I know UNH has brand-new tennis courts as well, so I don't know what they, I have no clue what they charge, if they even do, if they even allow outside people to use it, so I don't know.
So I, what I, what I would propose, because this is a lot of information that we're just receiving today, which is, is great because it's very detailed, I would propose that we send this to the finance committee to, to kind of take a first bite at it. And it would give the full board an opportunity to kind of digest all the information and that we revisit it at the next board meeting. So if that sounds amenable to everyone, we'll, we'll leave it at that. Are there any, is there, are there any additional questions right now or any additional information that would, that people would want Amy to prepare for either the finance committee or for the full, you know, for our next full board meeting? Yes Dan?
One other, this is fantastic by the way, I appreciate all the work. St. Thomas is another local school that rents their facilities out to outside groups. Last I knew, they were in that $150 range, but I, it's been a couple of years. And that, that might be worth including just to understand the local market.
If anybody comes up with anything else, like I said, it's a lot to look at, just send an email to Dr. Morse and he'll send me the request and I'll get that for everybody.
Can I just, I'd be interested if you have like usage, like how, just how mu, how much are these outside groups using the field so we can kind of approximate that if you do charge a certain amount, that's going to cause that group to either come up with that money or find another plan? So maybe, mostly the, mostly the turf field, but you know, that's, that's what I'd be most interested in.
And to add on to that, the frequency by group, so like how much do the profit groups use, how much do the nonprofit group, is that what you meant?
You can actually, which, the name of the group, you know, yeah, yeah.
Two, two things to add to that. First of all, all these requests are going to take a lot of time on Amy's part, so we might not have that by next week. I know the finance committee wants to meet next week, but we're not sure what day, so the turnaround might not be, at least not in the packet for next week, just keep that in mind, if we get it done on time, but we're trying to logistically get the three of us together and it's not as easy as we originally thought it was. These kids get in the way all the time.
So based on my conversation with Tom, he deferred that the, the two of you meet to get it started because he had a commitment that he couldn't get out of. And our nights are fast-filling again and Heather put out the option of meeting in the daytime, which you agreed to. So I think we'll have a daytime meeting to get it started and we'll go to town getting, getting this work done. So we, we remember we anticipated this would be over the course of January and February, so you know, we, the, the goal of the board was to finish this work by the end of February so the new board didn't inherit it.
But I do want to reiterate that these questions are very time-consuming for her, so don't, please don't have an expectation of the next meeting, everything is there. I don't want to speak for you Amy, but I don't also want, I know you have a lot of other responsibilities.
I won't make promises, but I'll see what I can do and we have a contact at St. Thomas, so hopefully I can get that information. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. School Board Committee Updates? Yes Heather?
So I have a committee update, but I was flipping through my email and I think, just getting it on on folks' calendars, the Internet and Digital Safety Program, that meeting will be Thursday, February 1st, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the middle school. And it's for adults only and you're going to start seeing messaging from the district about it, I suspect.
Other committee updates?
Not necessarily a committee update, but I know how much Gianna loves following these crazy bills in Concord, so I'm going to throw one at her. SB 219, which is a wonderful, wonderful bill that's coming through Concord, which is basically now when you go to vote, they want to change the law, so when you go to vote on your budget, you also have a list of five similarly, I believe it's similarly sized schools and what they pay their teachers, what they pay their administrators and all that, so you have that with you when you go to vote. So that's another convoluted law that is going through the system. So keep that on your radar. I'll keep an eye on that one too, but I know how much Gianna loves, loves that stuff.
Any other committee updates? So pub, no, I see no members of the public. Closing actions, so yes, our budget hearing is January 10th, 7:00, right here. Oh, yes Bill. That's okay.
I just found out that the concerts on the 25th are going to start at 6:00 PM. I want to make sure I got you that information.
I got it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Denise, before you do the closing comments, I should have done this on my report. Many of you know Maria Barth, you know, as the chair from 12 years ago and served on the board with distinction. And we all know her husband Bob. Bob passed. And so if you want to reach out to Maria, that's a worthy thing to do. Bob often spoke at board meetings and pretty spirited and I just wanted to send out our sympathy to Maria.
All right, future meeting dates, so public hearing right here on January 10th at 7:00. Then our next regular board meeting is the 17th and our joint board meeting with Barrington is the 23rd at 6:00 PM and that's in Barrington. And so with that, we will go into one of two non-public sessions. This, they're both under RSA. The first one's RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2C, and that's to have an administrator discussion. So I will make that motion. Can I have a second? Tom, roll call vote?
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Denise Day, yes?
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes?
Gianna Lacy, yes.
All right, and we will go into non-public and we are not anticipating any further business after our non-publics are over, so people will have to stick around.